Like bring this meeting to order, the Zebulon Board of Commissioners work session, August 26, 2025. We need a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes, thank you. Oh, business. Board vacancies appointment. This item was tabled on August 4th, and we have two candidates, Milton Robinson and Lucrecia Moore. Before we proceed, we would have the town attorney give us a statement, please.
Sure, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the board and members of the public, so I'll try to give an update on some research that I've done and guidance for you as you go through this appointment process. So, I mentioned it before, but it's a little bit of a kind of statutory academic lesson in the way the town's charter is written. So, as you know, the charter says that the board shall appoint, I'll read it right here, it says, "In the event a vacancy occurs in the office of the commissioner, the board shall," and this is the important part, "by plurality vote, appoint some qualified person to fill the vacancy." And so, the reason that plurality vote language is important is because it goes to this issue of the mayor breaking a tie or not. And so, the statute that talks about when the mayor breaks a tie is 168-69, okay? And it says, "The mayor shall preside at all council meetings, but shall have the right to vote only when there are equal numbers of votes in the affirmative and in the negative." So, in your typical process where you have a motion and a second, then you all say yes or no, right? It's an affirmative or a negative vote. And if there's an equal number of affirmative and negative votes, then the mayor breaks the tie. In the case of a plurality vote to fill an open seat in an appointment, you're not voting yes or no. People are voting for a particular candidate, and so, it's not an affirmative or negative vote. School of Government had an article on this that I got tuned into as this started to, as this vacancy appointment process started to occur. So, that's why the mayor's not casting a tie-breaking vote in this scenario. What can happen is if the, few things, if the board deadlocks, you can reopen nominations. So, you can say, all right, really, at any time, each round, you can say, again, you need the person to be qualified, and I think it's appropriate for the person to have expressed an interest in serving. But other names can come in, and if there's a plurality vote achieved at any time, then that person would get the appointment. And again, it's only to fill through the remaining term because at the election time, the seat will be filled in the ordinary process. So, that's what I wanted to share. Any questions on that?
Would you share on the previous tie-break?
Oh, sure, yeah. I wasn't in the seat at the time, you know, but in thinking back and talking to folks about it, I think it was just that there wasn't focus and appreciation on that distinction between plurality votes and majority votes. And so, the board process was what it kind of always is in most cases of what is perceived to be a tie, which is a mayor breaking the tie. But since we've consulted with the School of Government, considered at this time, looked at the statutes, and come to the conclusion that we've come to, that's our advice on how this process should go.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the board? All right, hearing none. So, we will proceed with the nominations?
I'd like to nominate Milton Robinson III to fill the vacancy for commissioner.
So, we have a motion, is there a second?
It's, Mayor, it's not a motion or a second, he's just nominating so any name can come in for a nomination.
I'm sorry, are we doing nominations again, or are we just voting?
They can nominate.
Okay, I was confused, I'm sorry.
They can nominate each round, and they can nominate in deadlock, or they can nominate a different name and not deadlock in either scenario, yeah.
So, I'll nominate Lucrecia Moore.
Sorry, they didn't hear that name, I think.
I'd like to nominate Milton Robinson III.
Say that again? Oh, okay, I would like to nominate Lucrecia Moore.
The nominations are closed?
Any others?
If there, are there any others? We do ballots?
I didn't do ballots because I didn't know we were going to be doing it this way. So, it'll just have to be by a show of hands.
Well, they can.
They could write it out, yeah.
Yeah, either way. You can do it either way. You can, you can write on paper and hand it to Lisa if you like, or you can do a show of hands. He is fine.
That's fine.
You've only got two nominations and we, yeah.
For the first nomination, Milton Robinson, show of hands. So, we have two. And for the nomination of Lucrecia Moore, show of hands, two. And looks like we're deadlocked again?
This time, Mr. Mayor, I think you could consider other nominations if another name is presented. I think you, or where you started, which is continuing to try this at the next meeting.
Could we, is it possible for us to table this to the October meeting since the September meeting has already, seems pretty full, just a suggestion?
Does that need to be in the form of a motion?
Oh, I'd like to make a motion to table board vacancy to our October general meeting, regular meeting. Second.
What's the date on that?
Lisa, what's the date?
October 6. Yes, sir.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Tape, I mean, discussion, I'm sorry.
What's the idea with September? Why wouldn't we put it as September? What is the Septembers?
I'm sorry, can you speak into the mic? I can't hear you.
Do I do, why we not put it to September? What is the issue with September? I think Commissioner Miles, I mean Commissioner Harrison, you give your explanation again?
I was just saying, I know we have a lot coming up in September, and this might take a little bit more time for us to discuss, so, that's my suggestion.
Okay, thank you. Roll vote. Commissioner Davis?
Favor.
Commissioner Harrison?
Favor.
Mr. Miles?
Favor.
Commissioner Baxter? Motion passes.
No, he cannot talk.
So, board vacancies have been tabled until the October 8th meeting?
6.
6, okay, all right. Next on the agenda?
And just so we are clear, Milton had his hand up, but I know this is not the time for him to speak. He did want to speak, but this is not the appropriate time. The mayor has to acknowledge that, so I just want you to think we were ignoring you.
Next item on the agenda, Christmas parade update.
So, at the August 4th meeting, we presented multiple scenarios to you with regards to end-of-year celebrations. We focused on candy cane and also Christmas, and we said with regards to Christmas, there are just a couple of options. Either we do it in a hybrid way, which could be abbreviated, to speak in terms of length of blocks, we do it separately. You had asked us to explore the option of a separate parade, provided we find a vendor that could organize it in a short period of time successfully. So, we did find a vendor, the Greater Raleigh Marchants Association, doing business as Shop Local Rally. And our Parks and Recreation Director, Sheila Long, and her staff have actually had multiple conversations with the vendor to discuss the possibility of doing that. I think I've mentioned to a couple of you that we're looking at the first Sunday in December, we're actually looking at the second Sunday, which is December 14th. They will be able to organize it, you know, for us, and I'm just going to read a couple things to you as to what they will be able to do for the parade on December 14th. They will develop and manage the timeline, the logistics, and the operations. They will coordinate with us, especially public safety officials and other key stakeholders in the community, business leaders, businesses, and others. They will also handle the participant registration, including collecting any entry fees from all participants except marching bands, which will be exempt from fees. They will recruit, coordinate, and manage volunteers as well as staff. They will oversee the lineup, the staging, the route logistics, and dispersal areas. They will also work on securing and managing sponsors that can help on the right staff time, event expenditures, as well as enhancing the program. They will provide communications and marketing support to support, to promote the event, working with us. And they will also make sure that as part of engaging the stakeholders, that the event reflects community pride, celebrates our tradition, and remains family-friendly for us. The proposed budget is $20,000. That's what we already have budgeted in FY '25, '26, so we're not necessarily expending anymore. If we do more than that, we'll definitely let you know as an after event. I've also asked that this be done over not just a one-time event, but it's, the possibility is that this could be long-term relationship with them where it's not just Christmas 2025, but also Christmas '26 and Christmas '27. There's an advantage to that in that you know what to expect, and the community knows what to expect in future years. While they propose doing this over the next three years, we could actually have them do it this year, see what that looks like before we renew that for the following years. We think this is great. It doesn't take responsibility away from us, allows us to oversee this, but it does put the burden of delivering a successful event on the vendor. And so, I feel we have a good thing here, and if you would, you know, allow us to, we'll move forward with them unless we have any objections, and if there are specific questions, Sheila Long will be able to respond to that. But we have a draft agreement from them that we can proceed with, with your permission. Thank you. Sheila, I don't know if there's anything too hard, but Commissioner, you had your hand up.
Yes.
Oh. Go ahead.
So, I'd just like to say that having worked with Shop Local Rally in the past personally, they are amazing. They put on events all throughout Raleigh, all throughout the year. One of their bigger events takes place at Dix Park, and it's called Falling for Local. One of their bigger events takes place at Dix Park and it's called Falling for Local. I absolutely believe that these guys can deliver on everything that they said that they can, and this is a really fantastic opportunity for us.
Comments?
Just if you could give a small synopsis of what we will be getting in that contract, Sheila, just so the citizens will know what we will be we will be getting. Can you do that?
Yeah, so the scope of work is what Ty just shared with you. So essentially, it's they're going to run the event for us.
Gotcha.
Almost in a turnkey perspective, there are some things that we'll want to be involved in, but they do this. They've done the Raleigh Christmas Parade and a lot of other very large scale events for many years. And so they have a team that is really locked in, that they work well together. And they're going to bring that expertise in how to successfully move this forward and put it in a position where it's more sustainable long term. So I don't I don't want to repeat necessarily the terms that Ty shared, but I want to share this in addition. This relationship is important to our community beyond just this parade. All Greater Raleigh because they're not just meant to be just Raleigh. They can serve beyond the city limits of Raleigh. And the services that they provide to help support businesses creates a lot of opportunity that we can bring into this community. And so the relationship and the discussions that we've had with the Greater Raleigh. Has really been around not just creating this event that celebrates community and brings people together, but also how do we create a relationship that brings those services into our community to really support a thriving business community even more than than what's the services that are already out there, but bringing another element to it. And so we're we're trying to incorporate it or recognize that this is more than a parade. It's more than an event. It is much larger than that, and we're hoping that it's going to bring services to our economic development team and our business community that can really make a difference here in Zebulon.
Okay.
That's good.
Any other questions, comments from the board? So do you need a motion to proceed?
That'd be good, if you can.
Okay, someone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to proceed with utilizing Shop Local Raleigh to facilitate our December 14th parade.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
Just want to ensure that the level of stress on your staff will be minimal, correct?
It will still impact the the fire and the police and public works. But we're hoping by bringing the expertise of an organization that works in a much larger organization, that they'll be able to bring some resources in to help. And I'm going to give this example. Last year, the vehicle registration and that whole, you know, workload fell on our police department. And they have a team that handles that, that's really, they're focused on it. They're retired police officers and from what I recall, that's what she said, in that they have a team that does that. They've got experience now doing it successfully in Raleigh and that they'll bring that expertise here. So there'll be still some strain on the community. There'll be some strain on our resources, but you're not going to do an event and not have that. But we are working collaboratively to limit that impact as much as possible.
All right, thank you.
Did we vote all in? Okay.
It's part of the discussion.
Any other discussion concerning the Christmas Parade? Roll vote, Commissioner Baxter?
In favor.
Commissioner Miles?
Favor.
Commissioner Harrison?
Favor.
Commissioner Davis?
Favor.
Motion passes, thank you. Strategic Plan Grants?
Thank you, Mayor and members of the board. This is an opportunity to just update you on your strategic plan grant process and pick back up. We accepted applications in March, but due to some transitions and a need to be hyper-focused on the development of our budget, the decision was to delay that process and allow us to get through the budget process very focused and then pick back up. We rolled those funds over in August and we are looking now to kick that back up. And so what we're recommending is that because there's been such a delay from when the applicants first applied, that we reach back out to the applicants, let them review their application and let us know if there's any changes that they need to make and give them a timeframe to be able to do that. So we're proposing to work with those applicants tomorrow through September 4th to just make sure because there's something, there could be some term changes or timeframe changes that they're going to need to propose or put into their applications based on the notification of funding coming a good bit later than we had anticipated. In that we will provide these applicants or these applications to the review committee that each of you has presented a member to participate in. And they have the 5th through the 12th to kind of review those applications, work through the matrix that we're going to provide. And then on September 13th, which will be a Saturday, that they'll be able to come together. And we chose a Saturday because we assumed that this is a short timeframe, but that a lot of these review committee members are have other jobs or, you know, other requirements. But if we work with the committee and there's a different day that works for the majority of them or for all of them, we'll be flexible. But we are, if we're going to stick to the timeframe, it's going to be very tight on how that works. And so we're proposing the 13th, which then we could present grant applications to the board at your work session on September 18th, and you can make a decision on October 6th. And then that project period would still be July 1st through June 30th of this current fiscal year. So just to update you, there were a total of 16 applicants. The current process says that each of them has up to three minutes to present to you. And I understand that was important because you were used to hearing from each group individually. You've never had 16 apply for a grant, which I think is great. We offered to either submit a video or to speak for three minutes at a meeting. And I I think if each of them speaks and takes that whole three minutes, you're going to spend about an hour listening to those proposals. I think it's all very valuable, but I don't know if you want, with everything you have going on, if you want to include that piece or if you would rather have an opportunity where they just submit a video that can be viewed individually prior to that meeting. So you still have an opportunity to to hear their heart. Or if you want to keep it, it's it's really your what what your preference is because I want to make sure your time is used value.
If we decide to view the submittals individually, I'd like to make sure that those are available online so that the community can review those as well.
That's the key. That's the key.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah, we can do that. You also reserve the right to waive the video portion or the speech portion, and you focus just on the application. You know, that's also an option.
I think for me, I think it's just important that the citizens see where their tax dollars going when it comes to that nonprofit aspect of things. So how we how that how we go about doing that, that's up to us. But I think it's imperative that we kind of let people see where their tax dollars are going when it comes to that.
Yeah, I am in agreement. I I think that it would be good to do the videos at three minutes and we watch them you know, individually and for them to be posted somewhere where the public can view each video that we're viewing.
Put it like a little.
Something that can be put on.
Put on a town website.
On our town website.
Somewhere.
We can work through those logistics on what that looks like. I'm sure we can coordinate with Eastwick Academy. We'll figure it out. I'm not Eastwick Academy, sorry. Eastwick is just on the brain. Yeah, sorry.
And so just so I'm understanding, the grant committee will, they're going to review all of that information and give us their recommendations? And then we're just still going to watch all of the submittals? And?
Yes. To have the applications for review and they will will score them against the measures that the board adopted or highlighted. And then y'all have, the way the policy is written is that you take their recommendation into consideration, but you are not bound by their recommendation.
Gotcha.
And so it just provides you a good baseline, you know, to to start your conversation. But the videos, what our recommendation is, is that the speeches in the videos you don't bring into your meeting so that we can be more efficient.
Okay.
But however y'all want to move forward.
You had a comment?
No, sir. I'm good.
Good. Any other comments? I'm sure if we have some, we can let Sheila know. Thank you.
Their consideration I wanted to share is that for the fiscal year 2026 process that we start in November instead of after Christmas and that we start communicating the availability of the grant and the the open the application period in November where you can work towards a January, February announcement so we can move this process before you, well, not, you're going to be in your budget process by then, but before it gets like mission critical time for the budget in the March on time.
I think that's a great idea.
I like that idea.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
New business. Pointe, appointment of acting town manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. So I will be gone away from the property on September 3rd, returning on September 12th. And so according to North Carolina general statute, 168-149, I may designate somebody qualified to act in my absence, but the designation must be approved by by the Board of Commissioners. And so we did that back in 2024 when I was traveling outside the country and I'll be doing the same thing now. And so I'll be out of the country for that time period. And during the timeframe, I am recommending that we designate our fire chief, Chris Perry, as the acting town manager. I will still be in touch, of course, but just you need somebody who will be on the ground physically to execute some of the functions of that office while I am out of the of the country. That's my request for you to approve to designate the fire chief as the acting town manager in my absence. Thank you.
Comments from the board? Go ahead. Go ahead.
I was going to say, and just for this time period, September 3rd through the 12th? Okay.
Need for us to have a backup to Chris? I mean, he's I know he's high demand. He's in the fire, going to be doing the fire and this, that's a big one for one one feat for one individual. Should we have a backup to him just in case? I mean.
I do have a backup designee. If you recall, when I came in April, I'd asked Chief Perry and Ms. Teresa Piner to actually work with me through this process. One, she's a former town manager in Wendell, and she's been with us for quite a while. And so that experience has served us well because both of them have actually co-led every single hire interviews that we've had since I came in. And that's why we're able to move everything going forward quickly. Both of them will also be available while I'm gone. But having said that, the statute actually also allows the council or the board to revoke the designation as you want and select somebody else if my recommendations are not what you want. But we do have a backup just in case Chief Perry is not able to be in that position for that period of time.
With that backup, I hear you on Teresa Piner, but I kind of looked at the notes here, thinking about what section does everybody kind of go to? I mean, I know everybody on town staff goes to HR. And the second section that I see you going to, they go to IT as well. So as a backup, I could, I would suggest kind of take a look at your IT personnel. I know she's doing a great job and it seems everybody kind of like can kind of gravitate to that one section. So I would that director, Ms. Easterwood, what I would suggest.
I would like to.
That's just the question.
Perhaps counter with how heavy her workload is right now, keeping the town safe from risk and making sure that we have the updates that we need and that the software, the newly adapted software that we have is rolled out efficiently. And I, while we're just talking about a backup, I also think that she might be a little bit too, still green, to take on that role should she be asked to. Not that she's not a very capable person, she's a rock star. But I just think maybe sticking with Teresa would be.
Well, at this point, the 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 motion is for the acting town manager. Before we start saying somebody should be a backup, at least should be given the opportunity to ask them, do they want to be the backup? They may not want to be.
Right.
So that could be a discussion. Later on, for as far as backup is concerned, but.
This will be our only opportunity.
But as far as the statute is concerned, we got to have somebody as an acting town manager. That's.
And I just will remind us that Chief Perry has served in this capacity before before my time. And so he knows what to do. If he needs a backup, I'm sure if he goes beyond Ms. Piner, he will know what to do. He's trusted by us to do the work.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Chris Perry as the acting town manager for the dates of September 3rd through the 12th.
We have a motion and a second.
The 16th.
It's 12th. It's 12th. Any further discussion? Roll vote. Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Harrison?
Favor.
Commissioner Miles? Commissioner Baxter?
In favor.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda. I got it.
Right, so we have a special call meeting for September 2nd at 6:00 PM. And the purpose of that is to update you on the status of the Five County Stadium. We've been in negotiations with the operator, potential operator, and this will be an opportunity for you to award that contract to the selected vendor. The Wake County Board of Commissioners will be meeting the same day at 5:00 PM, and we wanted to be able to make sure that we align the announcement on the same day, right about the same time. And that's why we're asking for you to call for that special call meeting, 6:00 PM next Tuesday. We know it's the day after Labor Day, but we also don't want to do this earlier or do this later. So that's the reason for the request.
Any discussion?
Can we can we have ours at 5:00 or is that, does that time not work? So we have it at the same time, does that work? And so.
Tuesday?
Tuesday.
I'm fine with that.
Are you available?
What's the date now? September 2nd, day after Labor Day.
I can push it, yeah. I mean, is that okay?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah.
At the same time.
If we want to do 5:00 PM, we can make that.
Thank you, Commissioner Harrison. I think that that's a better option.
Any any further discussion?
I'm just excited that we are making this announcement, so.
We are too. Excited.
I'd like to make a motion to call a special call meeting on September 2nd, 2025 at 5:00 PM.
Is there a second? Second. Any further discussion? Roll vote, Commissioner Davis?
Favor.
Commissioner Harrison?
Favor.
Commissioner Miles?
Favor.
Commissioner Baxter?
Favor.
Motion passes, thank you. Next on the agenda, we will need a motion to go into closed session as allowed by NCE GS 143-318.11 for the purpose of property acquisition for Parks and Recreation. Are we going next door? Is there a motion?
Some moved.
We need a second. All in favor? Motion passes, thank you. Do we need a five-minute? Five-minute?